Good morning. Thank you all for joining us. We have a really big crowd this morning. So I want us to, we've got kind of a full agenda too, so I want us to get going. So again, thank you all for joining us today. We've got a couple momentous items on our agenda. So I am going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
President.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano is absent. Gordon.
Here.
Kano is absent. Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent. President Johnson.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
We have a quorum present. And next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and I know there's a couple amendments. The first is a motion by Councilmember Glidden to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution honoring Prince Rogers Nelson.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Kano to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution honoring the Ecuadorian community and calling on President Obama to grant temporary protected status to victims of the Ecuadorian community.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 15, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it sounds like we are going to have our first and most exciting item just about first on our agenda. Let me read through the agenda, and then I'm sure there's others who want to speak.
And Council Vice President, you were very kind to give me the list of our attendees, and I forgot to say that, so.
Would you like me to go ahead?
I can do that if that's okay.
Why don't you do that, please?
I wrote them down, thank you, with your help. I'm so sorry. Beginning of the meeting, I should tell everyone that we have a number of park board commissioners and also a member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation. So we have been joined by a number of elected officials, including Carol Becker from the Board of Estimate and Taxation, Stephanie Musich, Park Commissioner, John Olson, Park Commissioner, Meg Forney, Park Commissioner, John Irwin, Park Commissioner, President Liz Walensky, Park Commissioner, Commissioner Annie Young, Scott Reeland, Park Commissioner, Anita Tab, Park Commissioner, and member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation, and then also Superintendent Jane Miller. So thank you all for joining us this morning.
Thank you. So we have three items that are on our Committee of the Whole agenda. They are, first, a proposed charter amendment regarding vote thresholds for issuance of municipal bonds. Excuse me. And this is an item that requires a 13-0 vote. Item number two is the Neighborhood Park and Street Infrastructure Plans Ordinance. And item number three is the designation of Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin as the City of Minneapolis Community Action Agency. And I will go ahead and move all three items, and how did you want to handle desire to take comment? Council President.
Madam Vice President, I think we should probably act on items one and three, and then hold two off for discussion and comment.
Okay, those have been moved.
Councilmember Yang, do you have a question?
I have a comment.
Comment? Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make some comments with regards to item number three, which is the designation of Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin as the City of Minneapolis's Community Action Agency. And I want to point out that Scott Zemke from CAFH is out there in the audience. He was gracious enough to be here on Wednesday as well, and, you know, just wanted to keep my comments short, but, you know, when I got into office, you know, I was one of two councilmembers that were appointed to the Community Action of Minneapolis Board, and shortly afterwards, there was quite a controversy around it, and it caused us to go through a process in which we selected a new Community Action Agency to take over the Community Action of Minneapolis's roles and functions in the City of Minneapolis. And we went through a pretty exhaustive process, and I wanted to thank personally Jean Rainieri from IGR for doing a lot of the legwork to get us here. And, you know, for us to get to this point required a lot of help from a lot of different folks, but specifically, you know, I wanted to point out that Councilmember Gordon and my office, you know, did some work in terms of helping with the process, and at the end, we went through administrative process with an administrative law judge, Tammy Pugh, that got us to this point. And so, you know, I think that we made a really good decision in terms of selecting Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin County, and I think that, you know, hopefully, in the near future and onward, this will be a good partnership and good agency for us to work with. I really look forward to this partnership that we have. And, you know, I think, I mean, for myself, you know, representing Ward Five, where, you know, we have a lot of folks who use Community Action Services, you know, I would love to see, you know, I would love to see Community Action Partnership of Suburban Hennepin County, you know, represent the folks that they will be serving in terms of diversity, but in terms of other things related. And, you know, I know that I've had discussions with Scott about that, and, you know, looking forward just to this partnership, and I thank everyone for helping us to get to this point.
Then, one and three, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Then we have the Neighborhood Parks and Street Infrastructure Plan Ordinance. Councilmember Glidden, did you move that?
Thank you, and I would like to move that, and then if I could speak to it.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, please?
Okay. I'm probably one of the few councilmembers who didn't get a chance to speak to this on Wednesday at our Committee of the Whole. I was there through the meeting and then had to leave before the very final vote because I had a sick child I had to go and get. But I'm just really happy to be able to stand here with my colleagues and support the good work of so many people in getting us to a product that I think is just a very responsible product, representing historic agreement between the Park Board and the City of Minneapolis. And I just can't be understated. Since Wednesday, I've had the opportunity to stand up next to park board commissioners at two separate events to talk about how proud we are that we were able to come to an agreement that reflects something that is really for the good of this city. I think at the end of the day, I just feel like we were able to deal with good ideas, and it was the Park Board that really started this, talking about their significant needs for investment at a much greater level to ensure that we were able to maintain this world-class park system. And then we were able to combine those ideas with others to make sure we had a product in the end that this council could support, the Park Board could support, and that ended up being about our infrastructure together, our streets and the parks. And I think we ended up acting like adults. And I hope that for some, that this is a lesson to other bodies, that we can be able to publicly talk about our ideas, which may be different, and find a way to come together and say, we're going to do the right thing, we're going to find a way to make it work. We know this is what the public wants us to do, and we're going to make sure that it is accomplished. So I just wanted to say, I said some thank yous on Wednesday to many councilmembers and the mayor for their leadership, and I think I'll let maybe some people speak for themselves, but I just am really proud of my colleagues, that they have shown leadership on this issue. I'm proud of the Park Board, that they were able to stand strong and talk to the public about what they thought was important, and I'm glad that we're able to be here today voting on this very important agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak and strong support of this item. And I want to say it simply, this is a generational moment for the City of Minneapolis. Earlier generations of city leaders built the Minneapolis we enjoy today. Their vision included great parks, their vision included safe streets, and they were willing to pay taxes for the city they built for us. And their investments have paid out many times, many, many times over, in the quality of life that defines our city and in our economic vitality. That legacy has been entrusted to all of us, and it has not been sufficiently protected. In recent decades, both our parks and our street infrastructure have felt the brunt of funding cuts, often born of short-term thinking, anti-government ideology, and budget gimmickry. The commitment we are making today for our streets and for our parks will allow us to meet our duty to the generations before us, who built the Minneapolis we inherited, and our duty to the generations that will follow us, to ensure they inherit a city that works for the 21st century. And I have longstanding partnerships with the parks, and long have acknowledged their operating and capital funding gap. The two budgets that I've proposed to this council as mayor have included in full their funding requests to help close it. So it was with absolutely no pleasure that I vetoed the previous Park Board action intended to commit spending for our parks. My primary objections were twofold. First, it committed to significant long-term spending without being tied to clearly identified sources of funding, and second, it did not address the city's own substantial infrastructure capital and operating gap, and it would have made it much more difficult to meet that gap. So since then, I've worked closely with many of you here on this dais, many of you here today, to craft a new deal that could meet my twin goals of fiscal responsibility and providing for our own critical needs. The proposal I will sign delivers on those goals while providing the parks with the same commitment that they asked for from the city. So here's why I'm proud of the new agreement. One, it's fair. It provides new funding for streets and parks proportional to our needs. The $22 million for cities and the $11 million for parks won't completely close our respective gaps, but it's a significant, significant investment in each one of ours. Second, it's transparent. It provides an explicit short- and long-term acknowledgement of the funding sources that will be required to fulfill the spending commitment, including the minimum property tax levy increases that will be required every year throughout the life of the agreement. Any future changes to the sources in this agreement today will have to be accounted for in the plan. And finally, it provides for assurance that both the Park Board and the city will spend these new funds on investments identified using a criteria-based racial equity plan. We must invest in our core responsibilities in a way that serves all of our residents. So I want to be explicit here again, if we are to break from the past, and if we are to repair the mistrust that we inherited between the city and the Park Board, we must keep our commitment to this agreement. The only way, given how this is structured, that that will be possible without the certainty of a referendum, which I was open to in part because of the certainty it would bring, is for this council and mayor, and future councils and mayors, to take long-term financial planning seriously and to raise the tax revenue that will be needed to meet the terms of this agreement. I am committed to making those tough choices, and I know you are too, by the vote that we are taking, that you are taking today. So it is to all of our credit, as the city's elected leadership, parks and city, that we are able to stand together today and endorse this long-term commitment. And I thank all of you for your support for this truly generational moment for the City of Minneapolis. This is a good day for Minneapolis. Thanks.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I was one of the other councilmembers that did not speak on Wednesday. This is a huge deal. I wasn't elected to do the easy things, none of us were. We have some more difficult things to do, but this deal gives me hope that we can and will tackle some larger issues like housing, poverty, and the North Side. This agreement isn't one of the easy things. It is an intricate agreement between three government bodies, the City of Minneapolis, the Minneapolis Park and Reich Board, and the Board of Estimate and Taxation, to address a set of problems we are facing, and we are addressing it head-on. The deal provides a long-term funding stream for repairing and rehabilitating our roads. This is one of the core functions of city governments, and we are stepping up to make sure our basic infrastructure is invested in going forward. While the roads aspect of this agreement hasn't received the attention that the parks portion has, it is undeniably important. The agreement we are voting on today also provides a stable and long-term funding source to repair and rebuild our parks. There has been much discussion around equity and how it is applied to our park system. At its very core, the use of the parks is an equity issue. On the North Side, our neighborhood parks are falling apart while we face the greatest need to support and engage with our youth. We are laying down a marker today, one that commits the City of Minneapolis to the best park system in the country for decades into the future, and one that commits to the rehabilitation of park services in some of the most under-invested parts of the city. I can't deny, I have hesitations about voting for this. It locks us into significant property tax increases for 20 years? Those property tax increases aren't just a problem for the folks in the 7th or 13th wards or other wards, they're a problem on the North Side as well. Older folks living on fixed incomes are looking at increased costs to stay in their homes, and landlords directly pass along this cost to renters. But I've always been told, you pay for what you get. We haven't paid for a road and park system that keeps up with our maintenance needs, let alone our hopes for the future. The property tax increases the City of Minneapolis is facing are necessary and important to invest in the infrastructure we need to keep the city growing and to keep this city a world-class city. Finally, I want to thank Council President Barb Johnson, councilmembers Lisa Goodman, John Quincy, and Lanay Palmasano for their long, hard work over the last few months coming to this agreement with the Park Board and the mayor. You know, I remember what Councilmember Goodman said, you know, a while back about this issue, which is that, you know, sometimes we have to make tough decisions because when we go to a ballot initiative, essentially, we are allowing the people to make popular choices about what gets funded and what doesn't get funded. And, you know, that's not a really good choice for us, I think, you know, especially because there are a lot of issues that are really important that maybe the public just won't vote for. And so I think this is a really strong and important decision that we're making. This isn't the easy answer, but it is the one that is going to benefit the city the most. Thank you.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. Para las personas que vinieron hoy a hacer la resolución de Ecuador, lo vamos a hacer después de que hablemos de la cuestión de los parques. Es algo muy importante que estamos haciendo como concejales. So I just wanted to thank everybody who's worked on this Parks Ordinance. As a councilmember that's new here, serving my third year, I was really proud of all the work that went into this effort and the leadership provided by Mayor Betsy Hodges and Council Vice President Glidden and Councilmember Bender, and I was happy to join those efforts. And for the parks in my area of the city, where we are located in a racially concentrated area of poverty, it has been extremely important for me to stand up for that issue consistently, early and strongly, when discussing funding the future of our parks. Our families have gone far too long spending time playing in broken equipment, equipment that has bullet holes and park sidewalks that look like they've survived earthquakes. So I really appreciate all the hard work that the Park Board leadership and the City Council have put forward to really prioritize and identify a racial equity framework for the future of these dollars. We're talking about the next 20 years of funding, which is extremely significant for us as a council to be voting on this. And it's important for me to talk to the community and for the community to recognize that a lot of these inequities have been created through intentional planning processes, through intentional policymaking. These are decisions that people make every day, and I'm proud to stand here today, making different decisions that are also intentional and that institutionalize racial justice. And I want to acknowledge that this is a good first step, and I think we're moving in the right direction, but I know that the work is not done. And I look forward to working with the community groups who have elevated the issue of racial equity in this funding question, groups like Parks and Power, Hope Community, a lot of the different organizers in our neighborhoods who have really stepped up to make sure that this issue doesn't get ignored and that it gets codified in the funding mechanisms that we are hoping to implement moving forward. So I look forward to working with many of you to ensure that this vision that we're laying out today gets implemented in the right way in partnership with our communities. So thanks, everyone, for your hard work on this.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been asked some questions during this time, 20 years, $800 million. Why that long? Why such a big investment? And this is a really long-term need. I think this is one of the best examples of a governing body coming together to make a decision about a really long-term need, and it required a long-term approach. That is why, for example, the Parks Referendum that was also on the table was the longest in our state's history, I believe. It was also for the most amount of money. Our urban residents are very tax-sensitive, and I really appreciate the work that's been done to be able to give this a very gradual approach. I like that this commits to a specific amount of money because it can be planned for, and it spreads that finite amount over additional growth in our city. Solving it this way versus going to a referendum was really important to me because it does help to ease that burden on residents as our city grows, instead of becoming a certain percentage of market value. Parks are not only one of our most treasured assets of Minneapolis, but we know they contribute to the health and vitality here in our urban area. And roads are incredibly expensive, and yet they're a critical part of our infrastructure, including what's underneath them. I just think we're leveraging very good fiscal management. Our city historically has made some decisions in the past that enable us to do that this way today, and I want to give that a certain amount of credit. I just think this is really forward-thinking, and it's thoughtful, and it's a way to look at the major expenditures of our city, which are not unique to other cities around the country. But we're making a choice here in 2016 for the future health and wellbeing of our city, of our potential, of how we want to live in the green space in it, and how we want to give this kind of access to every child in Minneapolis. So I'm really excited about this vote here today. Thanks.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a couple of brief comments to make on this, which everybody is already saying much of the same. So I thought I'd share with you some thoughts that I had that was outside of what we've been all talking about. I was at an event last night, and I had the opportunity to have the Commissioner of Transportation, Charlie Zelling, come up to me and say what you guys are doing, and what he meant by "you guys" was the City of Minneapolis, this council, and this mayor for taking an incredibly bold action to not just address park issues. This is the Commissioner of Transportation saying, this is a level of government that really works. This is the City of Minneapolis, and it should be leading. What he's talking about is the state of Minnesota should recognize that if you need transportation solutions, you need to fund them, and you need to do them responsibly, and you need to do them long-term. And when the Commissioner of Transportation says that to me, man, that was a big, prideful moment for me because this would not happen without Mayor Hodges saying, yes, transportation is a long-term need that we need to address, and we should use this opportunity now to do so. We're talking about infrastructure. We're not just talking about trees. And we're talking about neighborhood parks, the things that drive the City of Minneapolis that make it so incredibly unique, so incredibly powerful for our economic development and for our property tax base. And what about the connections of transit and transportation and streets that get people to work, to home, and to these parks? And so I just wanted to share that with you. This is really being recognized regionally, statewide, and I think nationally, that it takes a local government saying, if you want it, you're going to pay for it. Now, how can we do that responsibly? And how can we ensure that that investment pays off for every future resident and visitor of the City of Minneapolis? So I wanted to share that with this body and with the audience to really understand how important this is. And I also wanted to take this time to acknowledge the people, instead of ourselves, in our Mutual Admiration Society, which is a semi-annual meeting, there's an incredible amount of staff work that goes into this. What came before us from the Parks, Park and Recreation Board was actually the result of a lot of scientific work, the hard work of evaluating the needs of the parks. And then a few weeks, months later, we had an incredibly detailed analysis from our public work staff about what our streets' needs were. They were being brutally honest, and it required us to look into the telescope. And so it really required a lot of hard work from staff at all levels. That was important. And as these deals got kind of shaped and directed, we needed somebody to do some amazing work internally. And it really, in my view, as the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, we need to look at, how can we do this responsibly and with the resources that we have? And what's it going to take in future resources to do this? And the work of the Finance Department, I thought, was incredibly important on this initiative because it really provided a kind of a menu of choices that we're going to make. As policymakers, we make choices, and it was really responsible and dedicated work from the Finance Department over the last several years. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of Peter Weginias and, in particular, Ben Hacker from the mayor's office. They were the ones that actually wrote the language of the resolution that I presented on Monday, along with the work of my aide, John Gibbig, who said, you know, we take all these great ideas that have come, whether it would be from the Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman's ordinance and resolution, how can we make it better? We took it and really did that, and that was the staff work as a result of the meetings that we were having to help shape that work. And so I needed to recognize those incredibly gifted public employees. So anyway, as we continue our conversation today, I really wanted to highlight the work of the staff and our own departments, as well as this council leadership, and the mayor for bringing this idea forward to include the street component and the recognition that we're starting to receive from this bold action. So thank you, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. And as Councilmember Quincy indicated, a lot of what's needed to be said in the celebratory tone is all appropriate, and no need to echo that. I just want to reinforce this notion that even though it seems like a bold thing and a feel-good thing, it really was the only thing we had before us. You either can act responsibly with the needs that are presented to you through numerical analysis. The park and rec needs weren't wishes, they were just basically, we have an immediate need, and to the extent we don't address it, it gets worse and exacerbated, and then we would have a failing system. And so it seems to me that when you're faced with that, you really only have one choice. You either abdicate your responsibilities, or you fulfill your responsibilities, and you step up and do it. And the numbers have to match. The numbers have to match the needs that are presented to you, and that's where the tough choices come in. I would say likewise for our own infrastructure, we don't have a 20-year plan, we have a new level of service that we're proposing. It'll take 20 years to just maintain that level of service. It doesn't solve every issue that was identified in our analysis. When you get to that 20-year point, we're going to have to maintain that level of service and potentially even additionally do more because a generational infrastructure need is just that, a generational infrastructure need. And what we've done is readjusted it to a more responsible level, a more manageable level, and a level that when future decision-makers have their choices to make, they'll say slightly, perhaps, wow, I'm glad we're at this place and not another place, when we have to make our tough decisions. But the decisions go on. And so I think today, I think we made some good ones, and I can live with this moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief, but I just wanted to not let this moment go by without saying how proud I am to serve on this body today, as we've come together to leave a legacy for our city. This is such an historic moment of us committing to this huge investment in our neighborhoods across the city. And, you know, it came from the ground up. It came from folks from Save Our Parks and the Park Board coming together. It came from us sitting down and looking at our own infrastructure needs. These were people in our city coming to us and asking us to solve a problem. And the fact that 23 policymakers from the Park Board and the council, along with our mayor, were able to work together to bring forward something that creates this legacy, that explicitly commits to racial equity in a way that I'm not sure anything ever has in our city, I'm not sure. This is probably the biggest commitment to racial equity the City of Minneapolis has ever made, and that we were able to do it in a way that was so transparent and so responsible and accountable, I think is just a huge victory for our city. And, you know, there's so many people to really recognize, but the fact that Council President Johnson and Councilmember Goodman were able to sit down with Park Board President Liz Walensky and start this conversation to get the ball rolling, the fact that our that we had the most responsible deal we could come forward with, those were such significant pieces, and I kind of can't help but note personally that those four people all happen to be women, and I think that's really cool. So I'm just really, again, so proud and excited that we were able to come to this moment and draw on all the strengths of these 23 policymakers that happened to be here in this moment in time in our city.
Councilmember Frey.
Thank you, Madam President. As a, as a man, specifically a white man, I'm very proud to support the unbelievable work of a lot of strong women. This is a, a big decision that is emblematic of the major decisions that we're making in our city, and it is an historic decision overall. And what it requires is a whole lot of people stepping up at, at critical time periods. You know, from the very beginning, the, the advocates for our parks and our park board, they deserve a ton of credit in identifying a $10 to $15 million annual gap, a $45 million gap overall, and a, what was it, $145 or some odd million-dollar gap over a period of a couple decades. This, these are significant decisions that need to be addressed, like not later, not a few years from now, they need to be addressed now. And, and the guts that it takes to also say, hey, we, we don't want to necessarily move forward with the blunt instrument of a referendum, but we need to figure out how the finances are going to work collectively. I think that makes a whole lot of sense. So, you know, I, I see that sign back there, which is not, is presently furloughed, but it says, you know, thank you, councilmembers. It should say thank you to a whole lot of additional people on top of that that have stepped up in a major way. So it's, it's a proud moment, and I'm so proud to support.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President, and I agree with all these things that have been said so far. I just wanted to take a moment to speak as well on this. You know, I think one of the first times I heard about potholes and reflected on their impacts of it is actually when I was in elementary school, I had befriended a custodian at the school and came in one day and found out that he had passed away the night before after hitting a pothole on his bike and going over the handlebars and suffered a brain injury. And, you know, you don't think about all the ways that infrastructure impacts a person's life, such as that, that it creates dangerous situations with the safety. I mean, even if you just want to look raw at the numbers, I know AAA estimated that the damage from potholes each year is about $3 billion. So, you know, we focus so oftentimes, and I think part of the story on this is going to be about, oh, it's a 0.66% levy increase every year over the next 20 years, and that's what we're really binding ourselves to. Which, by the way, I'll mention, you know, is not a property tax increase. We happened to raise the levy the last two years, and actually, the majority of homeowners saw their property taxes go down. But I think about beyond the levy increase, all the numerous and calculable ways that this investment will pay off for residents and ultimately lead to far greater value from the kids that'll meet their very best friends, that they'll be with for the rest of their lives when they're out playing in the sports leagues, and the lessons they'll learn, the camaraderie, the teamwork, the skills, the passions, those experiences that they'll reflect back on when they're 80 years old, 90 years old, and they'll look back to those great days. And thinking about the value and the impact on our homes around the parks and for every single resident, the value of having great streets, the people that want to move here because this helped tip the scales. And I just, I think about all of that, and it's so incredible, the leadership shown here today by our mayor, by our council president, councilmember Quincy, Goodman, Palmasano, our folks outside, I see Mark Andrew, Tom Evers, all the, all individuals, the park board members, park superintendent Carol Becker, all the individuals who are here today recognizing this momentous moment. And, you know, I think about, the parks that we enjoy are a result of all the investments that have been made by a generation before us. And in a lot of ways, we're kind of coasting off of that because we still have buildings that are now falling apart, fields that are torn up and muddy. And so we have a responsibility to invest in those parks that we enjoy and that we love so much and what we're going to do for the next generation. And I see that in the South Side area plans, in our master plans from around the city, the investments that we're making into our neighborhood parks, that the generations yet to come that haven't been born yet are going to be enjoying and looking back and saying, wow, I can't believe somebody put this here for us to enjoy, and all the memories tied to it. And it's just, it's amazing, and I just want to thank everyone involved in it. It's, it's humbling, and it's a proud moment, I believe, for our city.
Councilmember Warsame.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Councilman Andrew Johnson said everything I was going to say. As a father of, of small children growing up in the city of Minneapolis, I'm very proud of our action today, and I'm very proud of our parks. And this is one of the, you know, the thing that defines the city of Minneapolis is parks and its water, and I think protecting our parks and our water is very important. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council leadership for their work on this, as well as the park board commissioners and park board president Liz Lewinsky and park board superintendent Jane Miller. And I'm very proud that I can go back to Ward 6 and tell everybody in our community that we will get necessary infrastructure development in our parks. Thank you to everyone.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I have been thinking about this day for the past six months, and I have to be honest, I wasn't sure it would look like this, and I have unbelievable emotion and pride over how this looks and feels today on a whole number of levels. I look back at 19 years of work on the city council. I was 31 years old when I was first elected, and the only person I really knew in the system was my old friend Annie Young, who I had worked with on many campaigns, including her own campaign for the park board, never really understanding why, she just wanted to be involved in this little sliver of the larger picture of the city. And over time, I came to realize why she did, because of the importance of parks overall towards our public safety goals, towards our economic development goals, towards our equity goals. Parks are the one thing that weave through all of the other things that we do collectively as a city. And I have worked on some of the biggest issues of our time, like many others who have come before me, but I think this one rises to a higher level, mainly because of where we are right now as a society, with so much negativity towards each other, and so much negativity about government and the role of government, and can government do anything good, and can we work together? I didn't really have a good idea of how so many of the park board commissioners and staff felt about their portion in the governance of the city until I sat down with them and heard how they felt, how they felt they had been treated by many levels of government, and why they were criticized often for having a very singular approach to the issues in our city. And I felt really bad about that because I had played a big role over time in causing some of that dysfunction, from wanting to eliminate the independent park board to fighting with a previous superintendent. I had a number of issues with the organization over time. But when John Irwin was president and Tom Nordike was on the board, and they determined that they were going to make a change in the superintendent, I think that change in many ways brought forward a change in the attitude of the leadership of the organization and its board. And it took steps, one after another, to try to work with people in the community and other elected leaders, to try to figure out how that organization and its leadership could become large, part of the larger picture. And although we didn't make a lot of progress on it on Ms. Miller's first couple of years here, when she stood up in November of 2015 and spelled out in great detail the work that had been done to identify critical needs within parks, I felt really emotional about it. I really felt like they had hit on something and called it out and said, so, since we don't think anyone's going to help us, here's what we're going to do. And I went into Council President Johnson's office and said, oh my gosh, we can't let them have a referendum because we don't need the public to tell us that parks are important. We all run in similar circles in many ways, and the public believes that parks are important. I don't, I didn't need the public to vote to tell me that. And as I asked her to call a meeting of Jane, Liz, Anita, Tab, and I, it goes back to something that was said earlier, the five of us women got into a